As a way of respecting, honoring, and creating awareness about our past, we begin our village board meetings by acknowledging that Neupold's is on the ancestral land of the Munsee, Asofis, and Lenape people. That's a new thing that we're doing now.
Okay, I want to add a quick discussion with Dan and Ann Gunther to the top of our business agenda about an idea regarding improving accessibility at the Sojourner Truth Park for boats.
Actually, folks, ships.
Sailing vessels?
And you're gonna, you're gonna talk with Noah?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Okay, so let's remove that from this business agenda. Should just remove that completely? Okay, motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Announcements. Michelle, you're in time.
Hi.
For, sorry, for the, you're gonna tell us what's going on with the red tent drive box in the lobby?
Yes. So our Resistorhood's red tent drive is, we're on our third year. And it's a collection of feminine hygiene products for people in need in our neighborhood. And all of the collections go to family of Neupolds and their affiliates. And this year, we are only collecting maxi pads. We spoke to family and that's where the greatest need is. And individuals who live in shelters or have, don't have secure housing find that maxi pads are the best way. So while we recognize it may not be the most environmentally friendly, this is a dignity issue. So it's important for us to help those who need, who need this. And the cost of feminine hygiene products are very expensive. And women, people, individuals who do have their periods often go without to pay for other things that are more important. So it's a great thing that we have. And we're hosting them here at Village Hall, as well as Elting and Gardner Library, Fighting Spirit Karate. Where else? The Children's Center on Sooner Neupolds and the Community Center. So it, we kick off unofficially today. Some of the boxes aren't going to be in those locations. And it'll run through November 20th. And this Sunday at Jard, you can stop in. We'll be there from 1:00 to 3:00 to, to just collect products. And also, if you wanted to donate cash, 100% of that money goes towards us purchasing the maxi pads for you.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thanks, Michelle. Phil, you wanna talk about compostable materials?
Yeah, just a quick announcement for people who compost large quantities of material. I was up at the reuse center, had a conversation with Laura. And last couple of months, our backhoe loader was out of commission then he was going to do large quantities of compost. But the backhoe loader is now operational. So if you have quite a bit of material to compost, please take it to our reuse center. You need a $40 permit. And it's $40 a ton if you wish to compost up there. So you can also do it individually. It's $2.50 a kitchen bag, or $4.50 for a 35 gallon bag. So that's the latest.
Thanks. Quick announcement, the new water filtration plant is now online. Our board went and visited it recently. So that's a project that's years and years in the making and millions and millions of dollars later. The temporary plant is no longer being used. That's what we used during the summer while the new filtration unit was being installed. It was replacing a 30-year-old filtration system. And that's really important because that allows us to then do other work, like install a new pressure-reducing valve and other things. So hopefully folks can taste the difference of the water. Okay, and then the climate survey. So we have a link here on the announcements section. So we're encouraging, we discussed this at our last joint town and village meeting, that there's a survey that, you wanna describe it further, Alex?
Are we talking about the climate vulnerability?
Yes.
Survey and how everybody needs to check out that link that is in the announcements section of the agenda and all over the internet? Yes, and take that and make sure, you know, to make your perceptions about our community's climate vulnerability known. It's important that they have as much data as possible. And if you are a renter, or you work here, or have any involvement in the community whatsoever, you need to be a part of this survey. It's not just for, you know, people who've lived here for 400 years.
And then the other reason that we're doing it is it's part of, do you wanna go into that a little bit?
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, it's all good. So it's a part of our Climate Smart community markers. And we basically need to get that survey done and do a workshop after that in order to move on. It's like a benchmark. Sorry, I don't have anything like prepared to say about it.
No, that's, that's all it is, yeah.
Okay, cool.
So there's a reason that we're asking folks to complete the survey.
It's a really important step.
It's part of a broader initiative where we receive grant funding. So we can go ahead and move forward with our Climate Smart designation as a community.
I just want to add to that, too. We, Climate Smart originally had a deadline for it, but we didn't get enough people to participate in the survey. So it's really important, so we extended the deadline so more people can be a part of it. So if you read somewhere the deadline is over, it's not over. You can still take part in it. And if you can share it through your, all your own social media outlets, then hopefully we'll get enough people to make a difference in this survey so we can get some good facts.
Yeah, and the recent Neupolds Times reported on it. And I think there was a quote from someone who said that they would ordinarily be interested in the topic, but they felt that the survey was somewhat long. So, you know, you know, relax, take your time, you know, prepare for a fun, engaging survey that doesn't happen instantly. It takes a little time to complete it.
It took me 10 minutes to complete. Which is, I know it's a long time, but it's like 10 minutes on your computer, having a morning coffee, 10 minutes waiting in line, you know.
And you can start and go back, right? Does it pick up where you left off or no? Do they have that function?
It depends on your settings that you have on your Google Doc stuff, because it's a Google form. But what I think is more important than that is, so, I mean, that's up to you. Is that there are no right or wrong answers at all. Like, that stresses me out when it comes to surveys. You know, am I gonna say something wrong? Am I gonna say something that's gonna get me in like, in heat, you know, in some way? And there's literally no right or wrong answers. It's literally just your feelings and your perceptions and experiences.
I just put it in the announcements section of the village website, so it's on the left-hand side. We still thank all of our husbandry volunteers.
Great. Anyone here for public comment? Wanna make a comment about anything that's not on the agenda or... Perfect. Okay, I motion to remove the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
So Dan and Ann, you wanna quickly, you wanna just come up, or you can even just stay there if you...
They can come up, just so the mic can...
I think the mic can pick them up, actually.
Think so?
I think so.
Yeah, it's a good mic.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for doing what you do. I've always had an aversion to evening meetings and have attended many of them. I think the aversion has become even stronger as time goes on, so I do appreciate it. And I also just want to comment that the playground thing was amazing. And I just felt that it was such a good thing for the community, even if we didn't end up with a playground. What I particularly want to point out, well, the mayor was there. I was actually there on a Sunday. I didn't contribute all that much, but I was there every day.
You were there every day.
I'm standing.
Both of you did so much. Thank you.
But the mayor was also there every day. But I would also like to point out that the Public Works Crew was absolutely amazing. And, you know, I've sort of gotten to know them over the years, and they're just, it's coming in with questions and stuff. But I was overwhelmed with their graciousness, if you will. So here are these guys, my height and half again, my girth, and they were real gentlemen. And they put out, well before I came on the scene, and they put out the whole time. And they were working twice as much as I was. And it was just so great to see them working with women and little kids and stuff like that. They just really were great. So, but what I'd like to talk about is kayak launches. Three, four decades, wouldn't get to my age in 12 decades, not yet. The head of the planning board asked me if I wanted to go up to a small-town meeting up in Albany. And I was totally out of it. The only thing I came back with is that normally, small cities and towns ignore their most valuable natural resource. And that clicked, and maybe it was enough to merit putting a day in to go up and back. And nobody else here probably remembers this, but the burning of the dump was within a stone's throw of so turned apart. And it was so amazing that grandpa once in a while would have to have a flashlight and point it to the line on the road. Because the smoke, after going to the movie or whatever, was so thick. And the lumber yard, and the coal yard, and the railroad, all focused. And the river itself was literally accessible. And I used to fish, eat the fish there, but it was, I won't elaborate. So anyway, I just sort of feel, oh, just a little aside that probably nobody knows about. When I was doing the rail trail, I realized that the village didn't own any property on the river. I think that that is, was the case. And some folks just to the south built a new house. And I said, what do we got to lose? I called them up and I said, I'd love to talk. They invited me for tea. And I said, what would you consider splitting your property in half and selling half to the village in order to allow for access to the river? And after, they picked me up off the floor because they said they would love to do it because they were not happy with the uses that were taking place there with ATVs and people lighting fires at night and swimming. And they thought their liability would increase. One thing led to another Larry Winters, the next piece of property down. He was my partner. He offered it to anyone at a town board meeting for free and nobody took it. So that's where those little, let's go with the new bridges. And then there was a woman who felt her property ended at the rail trail. Didn't even know it went to the river. So I talked to her and we ended up with three pieces of property. So, and this now, I feel, has been turned into a gem for the village. Interestingly, a year and a half ago, I was there with Craig, who, as you all know, probably rents the kayaks and the bikes. And he's been doing, I think, a fabulous job. And his daughter came up and said, Daddy, I have to pee. And he said, I'll take you home. And I counted the number of cars, and there were over 20. And there was no porta potties, so I immediately went to Tim and to Blue. And within a week, and Craig said that I was connected with high places, because within a week, they provided a porta potty there. So Ann and I, a month ago or so, went up to Athens on the Hudson and stayed overnight a couple of days. And we didn't have our kayaks with us, so we rented them. And Athens has something called a kayak launch site. And it's just lovely. So this is owned by the town, has a dock, as it were, and this is connected.
Thank you.
Connected to the dock. I don't know, how many, how many years kayak? Anyway, we're at an age where not handicap, we were cutting and lugging wood today. But to watch me get out of a kayak after an hour of paddling is not a pretty sight, especially in the water. So the kayak launch is something that's affixed rigidly to the dock. Affixed rigidly to the dock and right at water level. So you can pull yourself in, you can see the crenelations on the side. The paddle goes on both sides. You pull yourself into the launch. And when you launch, you pull yourself out. And it was just such a joy. And they also advertise it as a handicap because people who are missing limbs and things can use this and probably camped it into a kayak. So we came back quite enamored. I talked to Craig and he liked the idea. So I'm not asking for anything other than letting you know that I would like to see if we can come up with funding for it. And I'm happy to, if you're in favor of doing this, I'd be happy to sort of orchestrate it.
How much do they cost?
Pardon me?
How much do they cost?
There are all different components. It's sort of like Legos on the water. And they snap, and ingeniously, you can see those little dark spots. It's sort of like an interlocking thing. 7,000 probably would be one section of, maybe two sections of dock to get out. And one of the launches, I was thinking about having it too wide. For those of you who have not been on a warm weekend, it would be great to go down there. There'd be sometimes six or seven people launching at the same time. So this would, some would launch in the water, but to have two of these would be great, or maybe we do it in the storm. I already spoke to the Rotary and they apparently have adopted Sojourner Truth in a way. And they've been planting trees there. Apparently, the head of the National Rotary is, was very much into getting all the Rotaries doing something for the environment. So anyways, Sadia, if you know her, thought that they would be interested. But I was waiting for permission, or at least I don't like surprises and I assume the board doesn't like surprises. So I thought it would be good to tell you what I'm about.
Is the, up in Athens, is that a tidal estuary that you're in?
Pardon me?
Up in Athens, where you were, is that a tidal estuary or a creek?
Yeah, and there, you know, in some ways, they have a real advantage over us because even though the, there is a tide, and it isn't estuary, not a river at that point. There, you know, it goes up and down as much. We sat, there's an island across from Athens, just a little way out, which makes it an ideal paddling place. But we sat there for 15 minutes and we were both, we were both beached and had to push ourselves out. So, but they don't have anything like what we have when we have flooding.
Do we have to pull it up in the winter?
Yeah.
And that would be the one factor, not only in the winter, but if we get a forecast of a major flood.
It's better to pull it up, okay.
I mean, I tried to walk with knee boots across the bridge during a flood a few years ago. And I could not do it. That's a small bridge that's...
Oh yeah, definitely gets flooded up, down, down the area.
So one of the things would be to have, they make wheels for the dock. And you can, I think, readily remove the launch, put them on top, and then pull the whole thing out. I think that that would be much better to do.
Maybe if we're lucky enough to find money to pay for this, then we could include that as part of our arrangement with Craig. Like, he could, he could be the one who manages it.
To maintain, yeah.
Because we have an arrangement with him currently.
We already have an agreement with him, so we could add it to the duties.
Because it seems like it would benefit his interests.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I'm sure he would be, well, I know he would be, so I took this over to him and he's excited about it.
So basically, all you were doing tonight was like, we were introducing this concept, running it by our board. Anyone have any concerns? So I think we're...
Just one question. You said it's attached to a dock. Are these able to attach free-floating in somewhere? Tethered to the land, to the ground, to trees? Because we don't have a dock.
At Athens, the, they had outriggers from, it was sort of like in the Little Teeny Bay. But I think all you would need to do here is to have the ram attached physically. And maybe an anchor thrown out with a cable, maybe on either side. And then the wheels would be under the dock itself, so we could...
It appears that this maybe is the docking part of the whole thing.
I think what Bill's asking is, what do you attach that dock to? Alright, so you're gonna investigate it further, both mechanically, how it will work, and maybe how it could be funded? Maybe there are grant opportunities, but it seems like...
I don't want to ask for money of anyone unless I'm doing everybody here.
Right. So it seems like our board is comfortable with this as something worth pursuing. Alright?
Hey, thank you, and thank you again for what you do.
Thank you.
We're gonna try to make Dennison tonight. I said it, I think it's another gem in our village. If you have nothing here, I'd definitely recommend it.
Yeah, I haven't seen this one yet, but I've heard wheeling right over here.
And Dan and Ann, thanks for all your help with the playground. And I know that you were both involved 25 years ago. And we've already put it on our calendar for the next playground building in 30 years. So please pencil that in, because we're gonna need your help again.
Our calendar is a little different than your calendars. It only goes up to December. Goodnight, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so you guys wanna talk about 21223? Corey, Eve?
We wanna talk about who we're inviting them to join us. Yes? Would you like to join us in our discussion of 21223?
Sure.
Are we gonna...
We're still here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we think with these chairs.
Yeah, those good ones.
Alright, so briefly, all we're trying to do is 21223 is updated so that we have a process. So every single project that needs a building permit does not have to go through a full-fledged site plan review. So this is, you know, just a way to have, you know, certain projects that probably don't merit that full review, that there's an alternative process. So this is proposed language to address that.
Right. I mean, there's, if I may, there's four things. One is it has a few definitions of things that we found were not defined, you know, like this access. Things that are kind of new, so that is there, too. There's a few. And code enforcement officials was never mentioned. We switched that in a lot of things. But the other ones were expanding a little bit. We wanted to find the balance between not having, having less burden on the planning board for smaller projects that it didn't need to, while not overburdening the code enforcement official and expecting one person to make a decision. And so how do you find that middle ground? So there's three ways. One was taking some items that really could just be reviewed by the code enforcement and moving it over to that. The second was to allow a waiver option where if we felt like it could be waived, the request could be made by the code enforcement official to the planning board. And we would have to vote on whether we agreed it should be waived. So that would be like a slightly higher level. And then the last one is sometimes there are elements that could be waived. And so the code enforcement official, the planning board, even the applicant could request a certain element of the planning of the site plan review to be waived. And then again, the whole planning board would have to vote to agree to that. So that's like, there's three levels.
So how do you describe the first one?
The first one is expanding the items that can be reviewed just by the code enforcement official without planning board. And that's slightly, that's, you can talk about...
Well, it's more like a clarification. So in the past, there's like one sentence, right? Beginning of 21223, it says this, 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 and this, very vaguely is what you need to go for site plan approval. So what we've done is kind of expanded it out and made it more specific, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, of what absolutely has to, would have to go for site plan review. It's just easier, makes it clearer for me to explain to someone coming in the billing department, looking to do a project, and then me having to figure out, well, do you go or don't you go? Is it, is it like, yeah, you kind of have to go, or maybe because true as you have to go? Now it's like, okay, A says, and there's thresholds, like 144 square feet for a shed. You're going. Before, it was kind of like, alright, well, it's a shed, all sheds have to go. And some small pre-manufactured sheds, you can pick up at Lowe's or locally at...
And the 144 you got from state code.
Yeah, that came from, so most of that stuff came from the state. It's just, that's why I say the word clarifying. Clarifying is just making it easier for me to just concretely say this or that.
Right.
Which was huge.
So the first, I guess of the three sections, the first one is like clearly defined things. Like, I'm building a shed that's 100 square feet.
You can look it up and say which way to go.
And then, I guess, the second would be the waiver process. Maybe I'm building a shed that's larger than 144.
And that's usually a conversation we have. So often what we find ourselves is, wow, this really shouldn't go to planning board, but it has to. And rather than just, you know, universally moving so many more things directly to the code enforcement official, it's if Corey and I, or Corey alone, or whoever says, you know what, I'm not sure if this really warrants planning board, then the request could be made. But in those cases, it, it, it would still be on our agenda. And it would be, the request is to waive for these reasons. And if anyone on the planning, well, not anyone, but if the majority doesn't agree to waive it otherwise, and if they do agree, then yes, the code enforcement official just takes care of it on his own.
So, but it's only...
Like, the shed's a little bigger than the one that's in that description.
So to get the waiver, the code enforcement official says, I'm comfortable with the waiver. They show it to the planning board. The planning board says, that's okay. And they actually have the option to say, no, we do think it still requires site plan.
Yep.
So there's that. But then I was also reading where it says, then the planning board minutes have to reflect the PB accepting the waiver.
It's on our agenda officially.
Right. So one...
I just did it as like a consent agenda item type. Like, it's, you have a list of things that if anybody has an issue with, then you talk about it. But if you don't, I know you don't, but just conceptually, like for us, like, we put stuff that's pro forma. But if any of us, like, there's a red flag or anything that we want to talk about, we can be like, no, take it out of consent.
Just so there's a paper trail, because I think that's what really makes sense about this process is that it's a system of checks and balances. You have the code enforcement official set of eyes, the planning board set of eyes. But then there was another paragraph that said, like, let's say the planning board doesn't get it on their agenda, then it automatically ends up getting approved. I would not want something like that in there. I think it should still require the planning board to have it approved. Otherwise, why would you...
Yeah, I think that might, and I don't remember that, but there's, there are some elements that we're stuck with because of, maybe state code, where if you don't do actions, something is allowed to happen. That just happens all the time. That if planning board doesn't do this within a certain amount of time. So that language, I think, doesn't really come from us. It comes from, and I don't know if either of you remember it, of just, it's not that we were adding to sort of restrict ourselves. It was more...
Yeah, let's see if we can...
Let's check with Will, because I really like the idea of like additional eyes. And, you know, just because, let's say, of calendar issues, it doesn't end up on an agenda. I don't think things should be approved for that reason.
Oh, I see. I gotta look at Sadia's. Yeah, we're throwing back to Will just to see what he says.
And Will's not seen this at all, right?
He has, I believe. Craig, I believe he's seen it. He made comments as well.
Maybe a while ago, because I spoke with him today and he...
I mean, we, yeah, mostly it was with Rich, Rich and Ashley.
Okay.
They made comments.
They made a lot of comments and then a lot of cleanup work.
So another thing that I think is really important when...
But let me just say on the other one, in my understanding, it would be officially on agenda. We would bring it up. We'd say, we're now talking about PB 1904. This is an item that the code enforcement has requested a waiver. this is an item that the code enforcement has requested a waiver, here is the reason, it's all recorded, and then a motion to approve, a second, you know. So right now, that's what I'm seeing, is that it actually is officially discussed and the motion is made as opposed to just-
Right, that the members have the option to discuss.
Right.
Like, I imagine it's mostly gonna be people saying, yeah, I agree with it.
Exactly.
But it's a fail-safe sort of double check in case, like Tim said, just multiple eyes.
And there's some common sense in there too. Like, somebody's building a brand-new house, I'm not gonna ask for a waiver, like, small things. So that's generally, and that's in here as thresholds, I believe, too. So we all know between myself and the planning board, if I'm coming to ask for a three-story commercial building and I ask for a waiver, they're just gonna laugh. So that, the idea is you're waiving certain types of things.
Right.
And then there's part two with waiving certain parts of the process, but that's in your next-
Well, we're calling that part three.
Yeah, that's what I figured, so I didn't-
I was calling it four, because part one was the definitions, but you can call it whatever you want.
No, definitions are-
But that's just to know that it's not like, again, to go back and say that, it's not like, anything I bring there is gonna be an absolute waiver. They look at me and say, absolutely not. It's more of like a request from me. It comes in the form of a letter, so that's your paper trail. A letter of request from the code enforcement official saying, I think this shed, I've already looked at the setbacks, it meets everything the code says, I've done the work already, don't think it needs this month and a half review, please waive. And then they make their decision from there.
You had another question.
The other thing that I would suggest, because I think one of the challenging things about code is that, so there are certain sections that end up being redundant. And I feel like we can tighten this up where, like, in this section where it's, you know, it's under referral of applications to planning board, this is, I guess it's two twenty-three B, two twenty-three B three B. So it's talking about for all site plan applications other than new single-family home. So then you also have the subsequent section where it's for all site plan applications for single-family homes. So there's a lot of redundancy between those, and I think the way those things should be written, it should be like, this is for everything, and then, you know, because it's like, there's like nineteen bullets under that, and then there are a few that are the exceptions. Because otherwise, you have a lot of the words that are just copied and pasted over and over. And I've seen this before when, like, in five years from now, when someone identifies something that they need to change, they're gonna change it in one section and they're not gonna change it in the other.
Fine. I mean, if the amount of cleaning up this went through, I'm sure we can constantly find more things to clean. So I don't think, I don't see any issue with making it even cleaner or tighter. I mean, I know you all saw probably the magnitude of what this code wants to look like, so I think, I mean, without having it in front of me, I think that it's probably fine.
Yeah, I think most of that was state law requirements. And the difference of, you would ask for different, there's different thresholds for different types, so residential, one and two families are gonna have different thresholds.
No, I understand.
And it gives them the checklist.
But there is a short list, the base, that everybody does. So why put that in the same place?
So you can do one, and then-
Yeah. So the particulars are-
That's like, one through thirteen are identical.
Right. No, we saw those. I mean, it is a challenge, because there's this idea, on one hand, is it, I'm building this, where do I look? And then I follow my checklist, and then, oh no, I'm building this, where do I look? So I think it was sort of a playing with what's easier for someone reading it.
Right.
When they're doing something, they don't wanna say, well, oh, I'm not supposed to do this, I am supposed to do that. Let them just look at their own list. But I think it, there's no right or wrong.
Yeah, I think the end, just efficiency, and also just having it in one place. Like, I've received, I can think of multiple examples where it's just because code just becomes a patchwork, it's just if you, if it's, it'll just be tighter that way, I think.
It's one of the biggest complaints I get with our registered design professionals in the office is, I'll see something on one side of the code, they'll see something on the other side of the code, and then the two of us are bouncing back and forth trying to find, so having everything in one place does make it a little bit easier, so we're all on the same page. So I agree with that.
Do you have another question?
Not step to stage two.
Well, I have a few other things, but we don't need to go over all of them here. I did actually enjoy the one about the size of the trees, if it's seven-inch diameter and a twenty-one inch circumference.
That's the most, that comes straight out of shade trees, right there.
Yeah, but that doesn't make sense, right? It should be pi times seven inches.
Seven times three point one four nine.
We can put a table in here with the mathamath-
No, you just do the diameter. Don't do the second half. Again, just those are-
I guess I didn't read that. It's twenty-three point nine, not, I mean, I did it because it was bugging me. I guess I-
Feel free to edit it.
Pi actually goes down.
That's an easy thing, that's-
So what are the next steps? I mean, Michelle and I discussed briefly some of these things, we had some suggestions. How should we proceed with our suggestions?
Well, I mean, I think if it's not con, I won't speak for Corey, he can agree or disagree, if it's not fully content change, like how the process is, I say, do your edits and it's fine. I think if you're saying, we don't like these waivers, or we don't think you should do this process, that would be something I would want the planning board to think about. But I think if, how you organize it is on you all. I don't think that it means that-
Yeah, I think the three-point process is fine, three plus definitions, but I think that process works.
Right. I think if you have like a major change to a definition, it'd be useful for us to know.
The family definition is completely wrong.
I want that out entirely.
And I've discussed that with you many times. We cannot define families that way.
It's just fraught.
That was the first thing we talked about.
Yeah, we had struggled over.
Quite fraught.
Especially in, especially in our town, it's hard to dial that down.
Yeah.
We went over this tons of years.
Yeah, I just don't think as a construct, it works.
Something to be developed.
In contemporary society, especially in New Potts, like, there's a lot of bias embedded in there. And it shouldn't be about whether we're related to somebody or like, why.
But we need to have a definition for that word, family, because, because there are phrases like single-family home, which could also be referred to as a single-unit home.
So maybe we can shift that there.
And we have affordable housing laws where we refer to families, and we have other spots in the code we refer to family.
We need to know what they are.
We just need a general concept to be used for family. But we do not care whether people are related to each other or who pays for what in certain households.
We can't get involved in third-party contracting.
But that's currently the way a definition reads.
No, I know, that's why it was an issue, because we cannot get involved in third-party contracting, nor how am I supposed to know who's related, who's not?
Yeah. We can only, we should only have code that you can enforce.
So that's why it's, I think, something to be developed.
This, that's important to know. We need, we need a definition of family, but we can take out all the stuff we don't like there. I don't know what a family is, but I guess we need to figure that out.
I've sent a suggestion to Will before.
You sent it to Will? Okay.
I've sent it to him in the past, and I sent it to him again today when I re-read this. Okay.
I mean, for the record, it does say not related, just so, as well as related.
I did, that, actually, I don't know if I have the one that they have.
Oh, you might be looking at a different one.
I was going through the ones.
Well, yeah, it says, it says, related, blah, 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 adoption, all that stuff. And then it says, but you can also be a family if you're unrelated and these three conditions are true.
The way the state defined it was totally different, it had a number on it. We just, we just can't do that here. We went over this tons of time. I think even putting, the word family itself is the confusing part, because family would be related people. What we're saying, can be related, unrelated, what's the threshold? It's just too much of an up-in-the-air type concept that I think needs to still be developed. But the way we've been, we've used that definition is for determining like affordable housing.
What was your definition?
Isn't census moving away from using that? We should look and see.
Yeah, I mean, I think the point that you make is sociologically, there is no good definition, but we have to have something there. So what did, what did you suggest?
What I've tried to get Will to come up with is just something that defines family as a group, where the only thing that we're concerned about from a code enforcement perspective is just the building's safety in terms of number of occupants and ingress and egress. Like, all we care about is safety. We don't care about relations or who pays for what.
Whether you live and cook together.
Yeah, living and cooking is in there.
Shared expenses.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't make this up, we got-
I know, you have.
The group is permanent and stable in nature.
I mean, we have mechanisms now to figure that out.
That doesn't mean it's not-
So, yeah, we'll try to change that one. Yeah.
Tried to find what a kitchen is.
Yeah, you're kidding, we had so much trouble just with terrorists.
So let's see what Will presents to us, and take a look and see if we find one.
Yeah.
Also, I'm curious what you guys think about, like, so in these definitions, right, we're talking about like patio, porch, deck. Would you consider any of those things part of the impervious calculation?
Uh, yeah, because it's based on type. So if you look at the definitions, there are different applications to a site plan, if you think about it.
Yep.
Some attached, some detached, some larger than others, but they're all, so when I figure impervious, I'm thinking the best way to look at it and to tell anybody in the office when they come in and ask, is basically a Google Maps view of your bird's eye. Anything that's covering anything green, grass, or something that could be considered in, so you have the impervious pavers, you're gonna like extraneous variable, right? But anything looking straight down is covering something that is covering grass from growing. It's kind of an easy way to think about it, so yeah.
I, that's what I wanted to say. And I feel like maybe we should err on the side of mentioning that. And like, if we talk about a porch, someone will be like, oh, but it's outside, how is it, you know, comparable to my house? Like, because it, you know, it doesn't allow stormwater to absorb, that's why it's impervious.
But it also adds to your footprint, which changes the skirt, whether the house changes the lawn.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
The same reason we want, we want driveways, whether it's blacktop or item four, to be considered impervious.
Right. I mean, I think that, sorry, having that clarification somewhere, I mean, I think where we talk about zoning on how much impervious surface, I think that's a very good place to make sure it's well-defined and what we're talking about.
Do we have a definition of impervious surface somewhere? Maybe that would be a good definition to add.
Zoning?
We don't have our own, we do, but it's not great.
It's in the curve.
Terrible way to answer.
Let's make it great.
Pretty sure it's in there as a pretty generic carbon copy from something from the state. We can expand upon it ourselves.
Yeah, we should.
Uh, we can do that, obviously, that one-
Alex would like to make it awesome.
It would affect two twelve twenty-three, but it's two twelve five, so we can always do that later.
Right. How many times have we heard people say that, like, item four driveway is impervious? Like, it's not.
Yeah, we need precision. We need to specify.
Okay.
It's great.
And that's, and that's good for you.
It's great for me, believe me. It takes a lot of time explaining.
I know, you know. Yes, here, right here.
Yeah, because it, I mean, having it on paper, and that's the thing, is, not that I get into arguments, we never do that, but it's easier to just turn it around and go, read that, I mean, differently.
There was another thing, I'm curious what you guys think about doing something like this too, where it says, clear-cutting or altering landscaping of more than twenty-five percent of a lot, should that be twenty-five percent or X number of square feet, like, have a finite number, right? Like, what if you have a giant lot versus a teeny-tiny lot? Like, I think you wanna look at them-
But isn't that why you want a percentage? Because that'll, that'll, ratio is a very-
Standardize.
No, have both.
Yeah.
Have twenty-five percent or a certain number of square feet.
Meaning if it's an extremely large lot.
Like a minimum, like a threshold.
Yeah, extremely large lot.
Where did that number come from, twenty-five percent?
It might be a little bit better. A lot of this, you have to understand, started before we-
This has been ten years.
That sort of worked into a meeting that I was-
We can call Tom, probably.
But in our discussions this afternoon, we found that percentage to be very high. So we're looking maybe lower percentages of the, ten percent.
Which goes kind of the opposite.
Yeah, I just, would just want a percentage and a, a finite number.
Yeah. And either or, that's fine.
Listed as or.
Yep. Anything else? Any other questions?
So what is, what are the next steps, Bill?
I understand it a lot better now, so my next read, I will-
That is the whole point.
The next steps are, I think we're, we're going to revisit this document, maybe make some edits. Is it a Google Doc at this point? Must be.
It is. This is the one that I have, it's the same, this is a Google Doc that I-
Then, any board member, mayor who wants to contribute?
You can actually see the comments from the attorneys on the Google Doc, because they're right on there.
Oh, from Rick and Ashley?
Yeah, from Rick and Ashley. See the things that have been changed already, and stuff like that.
I don't think we have that one.
You have that?
We do.
Yeah, I don't see comments.
I don't remember.
Oh, I don't know if we have the comments here.
Yeah.
Whatever, I definitely have the comments, so if I find it also.
Yeah.
And then, goes to Will.
Maybe.
And back to us.
And then you have to do a public hearing?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you feel like you want to just give it to us to sort of one more time, say, yep, to the planning board, or if not, I mean, I think I'll leave it to your judgment as to whether it's a significant kind of change that you want us to sort of-
I don't think there's gonna be any material changes to the process. I think the, the process you identified works.
Okay.
Yeah, so I know I'll probably have track changes, and Tim has stuff, so we'll just, you know, we can work on our Google Doc and then we'll throw it back to you.
So, would love to just encourage, the sooner this can happen, it saves money and time, and it'll be great. And a lot of the time is his time, so, believe it or not, it seems ironic that it would actually save time for Corey, but it actually would. So, um-
I believe it.
It's more work, but it's streamlined, so it makes it easier for me.
Yeah.
It's, it does require more-
And, well, and also you don't step aside when it comes to the planning board either, so it then becomes, you have long conversations about why.
Okay.
You good?
Thank you.
Can we move the park thing up since you're waiting?
Yeah, let's talk about mask out.
Thank you, Corey, thank you.
We've got the firehouse stuff.
Do it, Corey.
Did you get, did you get a PEC for us? So real quick, I was on the phone like fifty times, and nobody answered, nobody answered me back. I'm inclined to agree with Rick.
No, 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 but, okay. I got a motion to handle this, I got a motion to handle, I'm fine. All right, we'll talk tomorrow.
Thanks, Corey, thanks, Eve. Okay, we're gonna move you up, we have a couple other things, but we'll move you up as you're waiting, so if you want to come on in.
Can I make my motion, and then you can discuss it?
Go for it.
So I motioned that we approve the sidewalk-only march and event with the conditions that KT will elaborate on in a moment. But we're basically approving your sidewalk-only march and event. And may I have a second for discussion? And now KT's gonna talk about this particular- For discussion, and now KT's gonna talk about this particular.
Well, I'm gonna talk about.
And the broader, but I want it tied to this particular.
Right, right, but I think I need to do the macro before I.
That's fine.
So I can transition into the particular. Um, so as we discussed at the last meeting, we have all these, you know, free speech, public safety, cost, all these tensions. Um, and, um, we did some homework to figure out, um, because our question was, I think for many of us was, um, if it didn't feel to us like if we were requiring insurance, that that was appropriate, um, if it constrained free speech, right? So, um, there's been case law on this, and actually Alex dug some stuff up from, uh, when Occupy was in Hasbro, some of these issues parcolated, so. So, big picture, we need to, um, reevaluate what we have in the code and then, um, you know, change our forms and process to reflect the new code. Cause for example, in our code, it says that you do need to get, um, a parade permit or some kind of permit if you are on the sidewalks. But our practice has been to not do that.
Yeah, we can't use the P word. I think it's really important, we don't use the P word. Like, we should only use the P word for those certain events. Like, there are certain parades in New Pauls that have already been approved.
He made parade non-permit, right.
Sorry, parade.
Right, so.
Yeah, we're gonna use march.
Yeah, but that's the word we're gonna, he used that in his resolution purposefully.
Yeah, yours is a, your proper phrase for, for yours will be a sidewalk only march.
Right. Right.
Good.
So, now, so here's the deal. So what has gone to the courts is that people have said, hey, like, we don't have the money to pay for insurance, and you're suppressing our, you know, uh, right to, uh, speech and assembly. Um, so, um, what we've worked through with our attorney is, okay, so, so we were sort of like, let's just not require it at all because we need to be content neutral. So what would be the criteria whereby we would allow for waivers or not? So, there is space already in our code to allow for waivers, and the case law has shown that if the group can prove that they're indigent, in other words, without resources or a way to secu- secure insurance, that's the argument to waive. So we have on our to-do list, board members, we're gonna have to set up criteria for determining, um, indigency. In other words, ability to pay, because that's the criteria by which we can cover our bases, right? So, we're gonna have to flesh that out more. But what Will Frank said, our attorney, for now, for you, is what we should do is to just have you, and we spoke earlier today, so this is what I'm telling everybody else, uh, if you could document that you actually tried. So what people usually do is they go and they just bandwagon somebody else's insurance, you know, which is what, what typically happens is like, oh, we're not a five oh one C three, we're just a group, and then they go and get some other group to do it. But you're the first group that hit, um, could find that. So Will asked, and Donna has provided, a list of all the organizations that women in black and the organizers of this have reached out to, to, to try to, to try to get insurance coverage. And I can see that's not a short list. And so that covers us in terms of saying, hey, we're, we've proven that they, they tried, and we tried, and you don't have the money, and we can do the waiver.
And you may also.
It may look different in the future. That's why I just wanna be clear with the public that we're doing this with you because we're learning as we're going. But that's where we're at right now.
And you may also wanna include the quote that I sent you in that email about a week ago, where the insurance company itself quoted to Ingrid, oh, we love what you're doing, but we won't insure you because we're too scared.
Right, right. And we asked our insurance company too, like, and never in a million years are gonna be like, oh, no, you don't need to do that, right? So, but we needed to go through that process and do our due diligence.
We did, uh, we made a lot of efforts to locate insurance. This is it.
I've been there. Definitely.
This is a great list of groups, sorry.
I know, but.
Like, what a coalition. I'm like, Alex and I should develop a list to give to people. You already started it.
Here's the actual list of endorsers, but we didn't go to every single one. These are all the people that are with us, and I think there's gonna be one five oh one C three in the whole bunch.
Exactly. These are a lot of, also indigenous groups that don't carry insurance for anything they do.
And I don't know if the list that I gave you last time had endorsers on it, but our Facebook page has it. Michelle, does the one I gave you last time have actual endorsers?
I think so.
Okay, so here's.
Thank you.
We have more of the latest.
Thank you.
We have thirty each, and he spoke for Ariana.
Can you email me this list as well? And I'm gonna pass this down to Ari.
What am I emailing you?
The list of groups, just so I have an electronic copy.
Okay, I mean, I would say that this list is really.
I think anything that we have, we should just put in the folder. Like, this is, this is how we documented.
Right.
Indigency. We've been having fun with that word since. I'm getting better.
Well, yes, I like awesome indigenous groups. We're in the category of awesome indigenous groups. Not to mention indigent. Um, I, I mean, can I just say what?
Sure.
My comment about all of this is the paucity of public space. Uh, so we're between two hard places. We can't go to private property, right? And we can't go to public property without all this rigmarole. And there's only one choice for public property. There's park. There's a big park, but then we look even smaller if we don't fill it up, so. Huh? And that makes no sense that, that a municipality has no public space for people to just gather. Um, I mean, I s- I've come up against this so many times. We've never had this much trouble, although we've had this exact trouble, it just hasn't taken us long.
Right. Well, there was a lot of interest in trying to, I mean, we don't have a common, like, how Woodstock has a common, you know? There was some interest in trying to make that happen in some spaces, but.
I guess the difference though is like, there's like formally gathering and informally gathering, right? That's the difference. Like, when you're creating an event and inviting people to an event, that's the trigger. As opposed to like a less formal, like, hey, let's meet up in the park.
Spontaneous.
Yeah. Or, or, like, if you, I think once you're, once you're like, you know, putting up signs or, you know, creating a date and a time and sharing it publicly, then it, then it triggers the event thing. But I, I think, you know, all we were trying to do is like, cause we have lots of groups that wanna have events, and they wanna be, um, they wanna relay to the local government and the police that the events are happening, and it's really helpful for the police. So then they know what's going on, like, they know why there's traffic, they know if they need to do anything differently, as opposed to, you know, getting a surprise phone call.
Yeah.
Right? They think, oh, you know, that's because that group is down there and, and we anticipated that. So I think that's the only difference. And, cause what we don't, I, I think our concern was like, we, we don't wanna just say, you know, we're, we're intellectually fine with you getting together in the park, um, but ignore what our attorney and, you know, insurance broker is saying. You know, those conservatives and, and those folks who are trying to sell us insurance, they're always gonna err on the side of, yeah, you gotta go with the most conservative route possible and, and require insurance. So I, I think what we've figured out though is a way where, like, if you have a less formal group that doesn't have a five oh one C three, and, you know, doesn't have, you know, it's like, as long as you've shown that you tried to get those things, as long as that you've proven that you're a smaller group that doesn't have that access, that's our paper trail.
Yeah, and to reiterate what Tim said, like, we don't want there to be a perverse disincentive to telling us that you're doing an event, you know? Like, we need, part of what we need to clean up in all of this is to make it so people do come to us, so they can do it with us, right? Because the public safety and so much of this needs to be done with us. And we've been very open to, like, people taking to the sidewalks, but then it becomes, we're still, we need, we need to tighten stuff up so that it's on the books.
Yeah, we, we need to definitely tighten up this process so that groups don't have to go through this process ever, you know, so.
And to not fear coming to us. Like, oh my god, they're gonna ask for insurance, so then they do it without us. You can't have that.
We want the groups to go through the process, but we just want the process to be something that they can reach the other side of.
It has to be an easy, clear process, not a confusing.
No, or expensive.
Or expensive.
Or it can't be like.
Owners in any way, really, I would argue.
So would you like to be sponsors of our, um, march and protest?
What does that mean?
You get your name on the, on the list as a co-sponsor, you get to be. You get to be a speaker briefly if you want. You can welcome the crowd.
That's true.
And share on Facebook.
Have we done this before? I just don't wanna get into the content neutral, um, trouble.
I'm a proud sponsor with Resistorhood.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in a bunch of these. Um, that's the only question I would wanna pick back to you.
Is there anything you could possibly do?
We do, we do.
We do that, right? I mean.
I'm trying to think of examples.
I'm just being sensitive to the content neutral part, since it's such a big part of this conversation.
But it could be the same, like, say it was a group that was getting together, and we, our five individuals were not comfortable with signing on to that group. Right? And we could take a vote to say we wanna be affiliated with this group or not, as, you know, we represent the village by a vote.
Do you need an answer tonight?
So this, so if we, just so you know, I think if we're sponsored, then like, we wouldn't even be asking for insurance. So that's why the content neutral concern. I'm pretty sure if it's a, our event, that burden doesn't fall on that group.
No, our attorneys will always tell events to get additional insurance.
Uh, there's some, no, there's some language in there about if it's a village in New Pauls, sponsor an event. Like, I'm pretty sure it actually uses those words.
So I have a question about that. Let's say.
So maybe sponsored is the word that's.
Well, let's say, or endorsed, or whatever, let's say you became a sponsor or not. Is there a way that we could have purchased a rider on your insurance for like up to a hundred dollars? I mean, everything we sold was like thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think what we can do, so this sponsor idea, this is what we could do. We could do a memorializing resolution saying,
In support of their thing?
In support of your event. So that's a way that you can put the village boards.
We have a meeting next week, actually, so.
And we could read it at the night, or you could write it.
Well, we could talk about whatever you want.
Okay, yeah.
I love that idea. So whatever we're gonna do, we'll do it next week, but we'll do the work to do it next week, right? That's still before the thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table.
I'd like to call a question. Oh, you put it, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, we're hitting pause on the business agenda to talk about parking.
Okay, you're gonna go back to this later?
We're going back to the agenda. What?
Is that what?
Yeah, that's always been the plan, that at seven o'clock, we start talking about everyone in this community's favorite topic.
Topic that makes everyone miserable.
So, do you wanna?
You want me to set the stage?
Yeah, you can introduce it, and then maybe we can have, um, a little, uh, opportunity for, for like almost like parking-specific public comment, limiting, uh, people's comments to two or three minutes about this topic. Cause David could probably present a dissertation on parking. We might wanna be.
Yeah, no, I'd love to.
Want him to give us the Cliff Notes?
So, so we've been working sort of like, what's the agenda of this meeting? Like, where do we begin this conversation? So, my thought is to just start at the beginning, which is to, what's the problem statement, right? Like, why do we charge for parking to begin with? Like, why do we do this? Why is this a function of the village that we charge for parking? So, yes, we're gonna talk about, I know those folks here are not necessarily here just to talk about metered parking. Um, but we're gonna start with metered parking, um, and our lots.
When you say metered, you're talking about on-street and off-street, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Um, so, I think it's important just to know why you do it to begin with, so then you can figure out the best way to execute a plan to address, you know, the why. So, my understanding of the why we charge for parking is so that we have turnover. And it supports our local economy so that our small business owners don't have people sitting in spots all day long. We have, um, residential, so, so most of the meter, what are we calling it, off-street and in the lots, are in the core, right? Where we have both businesses and residences. So if there's apartments that are near our small businesses, there's this chance that people might park all day long in these spots, right? So when we were talking about, like, what days we should have holiday parking for, I kept saying, like, why, like, we're like, these are the days we want to charge for parking, right? Like, Christmas Eve, we should be charging for parking, not not charging for parking, except in the whole month of December. If that's the reason, if it's to make sure that we have turnover for, uh, local businesses.
Yeah, but I, I think what's fascinating about that holiday conversation, right, is Christmas Day in New Pauls, there's no cars downtown. Whereas like Easter, there's a million cars downtown, right? So like, this idea of like, we wanna charge for parking on holidays, or we wanna give people, uh, something free on holidays. Like, different holidays result in different car volume.
Yeah, and another thing that has, comes up relatedly is like, different days of the week. Like, we have rules during the week that maybe we just need on the weekend, in certain places, right? So, in, in a lot of this, we have one-size-fits-all remedies, or that's not the right word, you know? One-size-fits-all situations, where maybe we could just, if, if we know why we need to do this and where we need to do it, we could fine-tune it better. That's sort of. I mean, honestly, if we can figure out a way to get that rotation without having to do meter parking, if there's some other way to do that, that would be a beautiful thing. Or.
Right, so we, we, as a board, we've had in-depth conversations about the holiday parking challenge. You know, you know, we even tried to come up with lists of, you know, trying to be as inclusive as possible with different religious groups and what kind of holidays they might have, and, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, cause then we were getting accused of being this or being that. It's, and then I think, you know, then we do three, you know, we do, you know, one-eighties, and we're like, okay, let's just have no holidays and just charge for parking three sixty-five. And, and it's like, is that what we wanna do? Like, it's, it's very hard to try to get this right. So that's the holiday issue. And then the other thing that I wanna throw out is that, you know, we've looked at, you know, our, our, and ranked our ten largest revenue sources in this community, and number one, the way we pay for fire trucks and plow trucks and health insurance for staff and salaries is property taxes. And number two, number three are coins in the meters and overtime tickets. So, you know, one could say that we want this parking enforcement operation to be cash flow neutral, but the reality is, we do use that money to run this local government.
So on, oh, sorry. On that point, I was doing a lot of research, and, um, it was interesting that when communities knew exactly where the money was going, they were very happy, like Ventura, California, their, um, parking fees pays for their public wifi and safety patrol. So, I just thought that was a really fascinating thing that, you know.
It's not amorphous. It's like.
Right, you, you're, you sort of feel like, I don't know, I'm making this up because I love the playground so much, but let's say parking is, goes to, toward, toward our, um, our, our playground fee, or our rec fees, or something in that. So people know exactly where this money is going to, and they don't feel like, oh, I gotta pay this fifty cents to, and they're annoyed about it. So I just thought that was interesting.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I mean, how much, like.
Well, I think as a board, we do a pretty good job of communicating and explaining why certain things cost us money. Um, you know, we have on our agenda tonight, we're buying a new, um, secondary clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant. That costs a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Right, that won't be a community bill. That will be installed by professionals. But like, we buy stuff that governments need.
But I think the idea is like, look at that number, whatever revenue we're generating, I don't know what that number is, you know, if it's, you know, ten thousand or a hundred thousand, and like, being able to put a name on what that's paying for is a really good idea.
I don't know what, I don't know that that's going to make the managing of.
Right, I, I just.
Parking enforcement officer. I mean, what's really challenging about this work is, you know, when pay stations are jamming, and, you know, it's sunny out, and our parking enforcement officials can't read the handhelds, and like, me and Nancy are getting called on weekends, and there's just like emergency after emergency after emergency. Um, and then, you know, Monday through Friday, when we have the clerk's office, you know, they're dealing with people who are so upset that they got a ticket, and they can explain why they didn't deserve a ticket, or that, you know, their family was original Huguenot, and they should never have to pay for parking at all. Like, I'm not, I'm not exaggerating. These are the kind of things people tell us.
So, but this is really important when we're talking about cost, right? Because we were just previously talking about a ledger of, you know, you know, what we get and what we spend. There's huge opportunity costs because we spend, our staff spends so much time on dealing, on parking enforcement and these issues. Um, I do think we should get people up to speed on, um, the things that we've tried to do and why we don't have an app yet. Um, uh, you know, we, we wanted to get an app, we wanted to get, you know, new pay stations, um, Tim can talk better about the pay stations than me, but the app, like, there were issues of data privacy, there were issues of credit card surcharge, um, on top of everything else. Um, we tried to pick one that would be able to discount residents, so residents could have it. Like, we had a really big wish list on it, and we haven't been able to find a vendor that can provide all the things that we would feel comfortable moving forward. I mean, we did try.
No, we, we thought we'd found a vendor, but we were also looking for an integrated solution. So we were gonna buy the mobile phone app from a company that was also providing us with a pay station. So we wanted to buy four new pay stations, or lease four new pay stations, so we. So we got a new pay station to replace the pay station at the Platico Avenue lot. Then that thing was jamming every four hours. So, like, I'm being called constantly. The, you know, our staff is dealing with it constantly, like, it makes people insane. Like, like parking is like bad for people's health and blood pressure. And it's bad for our staff's health and time.
Which is why I come to that fundamental question. Like, this is not a good way to address this issue. Like, there, there's gotta be a better way to get the turnover we need in spots than how we're doing it.
I, I just wanna interject another fun fact that I found. Um, so, it, it was this, I really went down a rabbit hole with this, I mean, I read so much. But on-street parking estimates a cost to a village or town four hundred dollars to maintain annually, per spot. So when we look at that, it, that's, that's a lot of money. And, and like, our parking, our, our quarters or goes towards maintaining these spots, just having them exist for us to park in. So, the, just having the spot, it's not, it's not free to, for us to just have these spots. It actually costs money per year to maintain.
That's a pretty good estimate. So if you multiply four hundred dollars times two-hundred-and-sixty-two, that's a hundred and four, eight-hundred, uh, dollars. A hundred and four thousand dollars. That's a pretty solid estimate in terms of how much it costs us to have parking enforcement officials, weekly going and collecting coins, the treasurer's office dealing with coins, rolling coins, putting them into machines. I, I think that might even be a low number.
Yeah, I think that's pretty low, actually. I, I just, I really, really dislike just how much time we spend on this parking issue. I'm glad we're having one meeting to get it all out. You know, but, but it doesn't seem, cause it's like, just drives me nuts how much I wind up talking about cars as someone who doesn't have a car. You know, like, it, we're, we're trying to get towards like a walkable, like a truly like walkable, truly green community and like this like, you know, green energy future. And we're like, we can't like walk down the street without someone wanting to talk to us about parking. There has to be a way to like deal with this and, and then be done, you know? And like, not have to continue talking about parking for the rest of our lives. Do you all know this too, parking?
I bet you do.
I do, it's really fascinating. And, um, so the first meters were five cents an hour, which, and, and that was in the ni- in nineteen thirty-five. So if you consider how low our hourly rate is, really, we didn't really take advantage of inflation over the years. Um, but parking started, um, the first meter was in Oklahoma City. This is fascinating. And, um, so horse and buggies were on the outs and everybody was buying cars and downtown USA's, store owners were complaining that the cars were just staying there all day. People were parking their cars and going to work and then they couldn't have like their bread shop or whatever shop, they had cars in front of it. So, a bunch of downtown business owners in Oklahoma City talked to the local newspaper reporter named Carl McGee. And, um, so Carl dreamed up a timing device. And, so it was five cents an hour and he created the timing device so people knew they had to leave their car in it. It eliminated that stagnant, the stagnant cars. So it's much of what we've talked about, that's why we have to keep people flowing. And, you know, on, on the notion of free parking, while that sounds wonderful, I also read this great piece by economist Donald Schup, full of information.
Oh, Donald Schup is the parking guru, yeah.
Yeah, so it's like the high cost of free parking. And free parking isn't free because we just talked about it's four hundred dollars. That's a low-ball estimate, we're surmising. Um, but also, when we, when people are stagnant in spots, that actually creates more congestion, more driving around, more carbon emissions. So it's actually not good, it's not free at all. It actually is very harmful to not have meters and, and that timed parking. So that was my, a few of my fun facts that...
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad you both were brought up like the, you know, we're all have spoken about the need to disincentivize driving at all.
Yeah.
Right? So, that has to be a part of how we look at this.
I think, you know, in, before I really took that fact in, I was thinking, oh, maybe it's, it's more if people have to drive around looking for a spot. But, but the thing is, is if the spots aren't moving, more people are driving around.
Right.
So you, you, yes, you, we, you might come to New Paltz on a busy day and you have to drive around, but you'd be driving around more if those, there were not metered, um, timed spots.
So I, I got two things. So I, I looked at the inflation calculator, so five cents in nineteen eighty, in nineteen thirty-four today is worth ninety-five cents. So that makes sense because that's how much most communities charge for an hour's worth of parking. Like in Poughkeepsie and Kingston, it costs a dollar to park for one hour.
It's seventy-five in Kingston.
I don't think so.
That's what Nancy said when she gave me these notes. We can answer this question very quickly.
Can I just sort of?
Yeah.
Some communities have, uh, higher parking rates at different times of the day. Uh, where parking's at the highest demand. So between the hours, say, ten to six, it costs you a dollar fifty or two dollars. Prior to those hours, it's less than that. Um, maybe it's not, you have the capability to do that, but maybe we could, maybe charge to certain hours, uh, a higher rate that might disincentivize people to drive in, or in all sorts of areas.
Well, we don't have the, the ability to charge differently. And even if, like, I would fear that a confusing system like that would subject our staff to even more punishment. Because signs are confusing.
Yeah, complexity is not...
Paying for things are confusing. And, and that's, that, that I think I would love to figure out is like, how can we do things differently where our staff are not getting screamed at as much?
But I, I will say out loud, I would support increasing what we charge. It's a dollar fifty in Kingston, Ca- California, I just got that thought.
In Miami Beach, it's a dollar an hour for residents, and it's a dollar seventy-five for visitors.
Right, and that's what we were trying to do with the mobile phone app, was we were, we wanted to find a company. Cause Wush is the mobile phone app that Kingston uses, they don't have any ability to, um, charge different rates. But we were gonna try to come up with a way to get people to prove their residency and then they would be charged at a different rate if they were using the mobile phone app. The problem with that, though, is the only way to use the mobile phone app is if you pay a third-party financial company the transaction fee, which was forty cents. So like, let's say we were charging fifty cents an hour, then, uh, actually no, it was thirty-five cents if you use the mobile phone app. It was forty cents if you were gonna use a credit card at the pay station. So that's another problem that we were going to have is, people don't like paying premiums to use their credit cards. But then it's really not fair if you bake it in for the people who are using coins.
Right.
So then, someone will say, oh, I paid for an hour's worth of parking, it cost me ninety cents instead of fifty cents, that's unfair. But that's money that the village does not participate in at all, that would have... And, and this was after our treasurer shopped around and contacted all these different financial institutions to do the best deal possible. Cause the other problem too is then the, um, the, the payment software has to interface with our financial software. Then the enforcement software, where you got the, the parking enforcement officer going around checking plates, has to integrate with, uh, with the, uh, um, financial software. Like, this is what we talk about so often, is that New Paltz, we have all the challenges that a larger city has, but we don't have the volume to really do things differently.
We don't have the capacity.
And we only have two-hundred-and-sixty-two, um, meters. And, you know, Bill has a good idea, like, well, why don't we do some sort of congestion pricing? Like, well, we can't, because a meter costs five hundred bucks for the clean vanilla meter that doesn't do anything. And then if you buy the meter that has any sort of functionality, it's like seven hundred dollars. And then you're paying monthly fees that would eat up all of the revenue that you would collect. And it's like, when you have thousands and thousands of meters, like a larger city, then you can do those more clever things.
I think, uh, in this instance, there was one town, they just charge from say ten to six. And that's their, that's their congestion, it's free on, on the other hours.
Well, isn't that what we do now?
Yeah, you know, we just stop.
What's that?
We, we stop.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we essentially do that now. Um, I, I, I think another really important thing that we should share with anyone who's watching and you guys hear is that, and, you know, I feel like Katie and I, we talk about this regularly. Like, if we're talking about something, we usually know where we wanna go. Here, we have no idea where we wanna go with this. And, like, you know, Alex is talking about, like, this is a frustrating topic, cause it's so like autocentric. And, you know, my fear is that, and we already got an email about this today from someone in the community who's like, I know you're gonna talk about parking. Please do not eliminate downtown parking, we need downtown parking. And it's like, that's not what this conversation is about. This conversation is about how do we pay for parking and how do we have a system that makes sense? Not that we wanna reduce the amount of spots downtown.
I mean, I, I've said before, I wish there was a legal way to, well, there's, there's a couple things. Like, I love, we're a tourist destination, so there's that problem with this. But, like, I really would love it if we could have a community whereby if you can walk a couple blocks, you walk a couple blocks. And like, if you got little kids or you're differently abled, or you have mobility issues, you get first dibs on those downtown spaces. Now, I know there's the issues of getting in and out of the businesses and that should be anybody. But if we really had a culture whereby people just walked a little bit more, this would be a much less problem. There's always spots at Village Hall. And again, like yesterday, I was walking down Main Street and I was like, man, there were no spots over Columbus Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend. And now, you know, it's Tuesday and there's like tons of spots. You know what I mean? Like, it's, it's very time-specific when our supply does not meet the demand. So if we could just fine-tune a little bit without getting super complex at the same time. But I also, I mean, I would love for just more in our community. Because it showed when we did the survey for the, the transportation study, what is that, that's like over ten years ago now? That like, it's us, it's not the people coming, yes, there's a lot of out-of-towners that are clogging up our streets. But, you know, the getting in the car to go get milk when you can walk to convenience. Like, like, we have a cultural problem here as well.
It's so true.
And I, and I'm not any, I'm not an angel, I drove down here tonight, cause it was raining, right? You know, I'm not saying like, don't use your car when you wanna use your car. But like, a little bit of shift here would be really helpful. This need to be like right in the middle.
Did we look into, I was reading Pittsburgh has, um, it's like the first city in America that has done this. It's called G-Techna. It's, um, it's a management, enforcement management software. Um, and it's paper plate, so your license plate, that's how you plug in your license plate at the kiosk.
Yeah, that's how our pay station was gonna work.
Yeah, that was, when we were looking at the app, that's how it was gonna work.
And there's no paper, so...
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's what, that, that's, all pay stations, that's like the direction they're in. That's what we were gonna do with this pay station once we moved to, to credit cards. But then again, you need handhelds.
Yes.
To have the right software.
Yes.
The software has to integrate with the financial software. Like, it's many, many steps and then it costs forty cents per transaction.
Right.
Katie, picking up on, picking up on your, picking up on your idea. What, how could we, you know, communicate this to, to people broad, more broadly? The idea of using your car while us getting out, walking through, and buying, I mean, as a village board, what, what sorts of steps could we take to, to encourage that? I mean, I, I agree with you, I think, you know, media, we say this at the table.
Yeah, I mean...
Where, where does it go?
I don't think it's a signage, well, I mean, there's plenty of signage that points up the hill to Village Hall that people could just walk at Village Hall, I mean, park at Village Hall, right? I mean, I think talking about it is a good thing, just saying it out loud right now is a good thing.
I think we did an important thing when we, uh, supported that, um, memorializing resolution regarding our carbon tax on, on fossil fuels.
Yeah.
Right? Like, social engineering is only gonna work, I think, if, if it's people on the pocketbook.
Right, so, we just did, we just quantified, I don't know, mapped out our carbon footprint. And the great majority of our carbon footprint is transportation. Now, a lot of that is because, and this, that's town-wide, is cause the throughway is so much. But even if you take the throughway out of the equation, it's transportation. So if we wanna move the dial on climate change, that's, that is the target in our community, is transportation. So there's absolutely an environmental impetus for people to be walking more. I don't know, Bill, cause there's signage, like, it's not like a signage issue, I don't think. Um, I think it's a habit thing. You know, when we moved and, you know, I know there's a lot of people here that work on campus with me, you know? Like, like, when we, when they changed campus so that parking would be on the periphery, so it's been intentional that parking has, it used to be just randomly throughout campus. But with the master pan, plan, it's become intentional that it's on the periphery. And changing that behavior, and then issues come up. You know, like, I don't wanna be like a woman at ten o'clock in the night at the back of the Route Thirty-two parking lot. You know, like, a lot of issues came up with this, like, that you need light in the lots and you need, like, you need to make it so it's safe and it's okay. But like, that behavioral change was so hard. If you go to any other college campus that already has a built environment where it's like, no matter where you park, you're gonna walk for fifteen minutes, then it's just a taken-for-granted.
Yeah.
It's, it's very hard to do that kind of social engineering when, when you're starting at a place whereby people are just used to just like, you know? Yeah, convenience.
I mean, one way, I don't even wanna say it, but like, you know, one way to do that kind of social engineering would be to like move parking away from everyone looking up and down Main Street. Like, if people weren't looking up and down Main Street, trying to parallel park, doing terrible jobs of it.
Parks on Main Street?
Right? I know, well, that's what I say when I watch it, like, what are you doing? You know, um, if you could go that way, um, you know, then people would be used to going up the hill a little bit. Um, and I, I, whenever I'm home, I'm not gonna say my block, but whenever I'm on my block, um, every single day, I can count these seven open spots. You know, like, and that's in the heart of our downtown.
Yeah, there were spots on the Huguenot Street, the, the sewer treatment plant lot, there were spots on Saturday. One of our biggest weekends.
And that's right in the middle of everything.
Yeah.
Best access to nearly everything you wanna do. So, I don't think that like, we know spots aren't the problem. It's also like the, the magnetism towards like one lot in one particular section.
Yeah, I think locals know where to park, but that's the challenge, is like, if you show up in this community, you don't know where to go. Like, like our, our Downtown revitalization initiative application, we were trying to come up with a solution, a park wants idea, right? That's a phrase that, that David shared with us that we put in our application. Like, that's, it would be beneficial to have a central parking garage or tower or lot. So, you show up, you know exactly where you gotta go, you don't have to drive around looking for a spot. And it would probably encourage more walking and stopping into different businesses. Like, it should support the downtown businesses. But we didn't get that great application.
Yeah, and even if we did have the money to build a parking garage, like, I, one of my conditions would be like, is this, could this be renovated easily into something else in twenty years when we don't need it anymore?
Could we do something?
We're trying to fix the problem that we have now that all forecast...